Meeting of the City Council, come to order. Clerk could call a roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Here.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Here.
Counsel Hanlon.
Here.
Counsel Mangan.
Here.
Counsel Mackay.
Here.
Counsel McKinnon.
Here.
Counsel Appolitano.
Here.
Counsel Sacheta.
Here.
Counsel Sani.
Here.
Counsel Simonelli.
Present.
Counsel Capone.
Here.
Eleven members present, Mr. President.
Eleven members present. We have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the inti- the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I may, from the chair before we start, I'd like to wish belated birthday greetings to Counsel DeFlorio. So, happy birthday. Chair will accept the motion to open public participation? It's been moved in second to open public participation. All in favor? All opposed? You have so opened. Do we have anyone from the audience who has anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to close public... It's been moved in second to close public participation. All in favor? All opposed? You have closed public participation. Clerk will read the first item of business.
First item, Mr. President, is an order, a petition for new permanent awning for Tasty Garden at 444 Broadway.
Mr. Chairman, through you to our clerk. All papers in order.
All paperwork is in order. It is a... Dark red awning.
Thank you. Chairman, favorable action, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second? It's been moved in second for favorable action on item number one. Clerk could call a roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Mackay.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon. Counsel Appolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli. Uh, definitely yes. Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You've passed the order. Clerk will read the next item, item number two.
Item number two, a petition from Francina putting up a sign, "Moda Carioca" at 606 Broadway. This is not an awning. It is, um, a sign that projects over the public way. It's a small sign that... Yeah. It's just a regular, small sign that goes over the public way. Yeah. Yeah. Anything over twelve inches. Excuse me?
Are all papers... are all papers in order?
All paperwork's in order.
What color is that sign?
No, it's just a sign.
Oh, it's a sign. Okay. It's been... It's been moved in second for favorable action. Counsel Mackay.
Uh, it's a shame there wasn't a... it's signed as nice, but too bad they just did that building over.
Mm-hmm.
Would have been an ideal place to put a nice awning on that corner. You know, it just would have brought it in uniform, but I don't have any objections to the sign.
It's been moved in second for favorable action. Clerk could call a roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Mackay.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Appolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You've passed the order. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number three.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone as President, petition for a second-class motor dealer license from Umberto Costa DBA H&amp;F Auto Sales Incorporated at 3 Everett Ave.
Counsel Mackay.
Uh, is this a new license?
Yes.
Uh, will this be referred to the, uh, uh, Committee on License?
It's been moved in second to refer it to business on community, uh, community development and business.
Business development.
Permission? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number four.
Item number four, committee report, order sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone as President, Committee on Legislative Affairs reports to Carson Advertizer, which posted, for not less than two weeks' history, uh, resumes that have residents' interest in seeking to position Assistant City Clerk, and that Committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections received said resumes, interview each candidate, make recommendation to the City Council no later than September twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, with the recommendation that Gwen Welton, David Flood, and Sergio Cornelio applicant... applications be presented to the full City Council for consideration of the vacant Assistant City Clerk position, and that each of the three candidates be allowed to speak no more than three minutes on their qualifications.
Accept the committee report, place on file.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The piece before you, we have three individuals who have been listed, uh, to speak for three minutes. So unless there's any objection, we will take them in order the way they're listed. So the first individual will be Gwen Welton. Yeah. What we'll do is, uh, if we could have you, unless somewhere else, we'll have you sit right at that table there. That first microphone is red. If you press that button, it'll turn green, and that'll mean the microphone is live. And take your time, and welcome to the chamber.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me to take this time to present my qualifications during your meeting. My name is Gwen Welton, and I'm a lifelong resident of Everett. I was educated through the school system and began my career here in Everett. I am the right candidate for the position of Assistant City Clerk due to my extensive twenty-year administrative background, including office management and supervision. In my current position at Woodlawn Cemetery, for the last eight years, I have been acting office manager in the absence of my supervisor. My personality is that of outgoing, compassionate, energetic, and overall dedicated individual. I have the ability to work under pressure, remain focused, meet deadlines, and prioritize properly. I have been trained on computer software systems since high school. Through the years, I have stayed on top of all the updated systems. I have experience with all the Windows programs, Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, as well as company-specific database programs and payroll systems. Customer service is also a part of my current position. The office at Woodlawn Cemetery is set up similarly to the City Clerk's office with a counter for customer service. Anyone who has visited the office there can attest to the professionalism that I have provided. I also possess experience with vital records, as my current position at Woodlawn Cemetery holds records dating back to eighteen fifty. In certain circumstances, investigative skills are necessary to complete a request. Accuracy and attention to detail are important aspects of record-keeping. I am also familiar with the new burial permit system and the electronic death registry system. I process the permits at the cemetery and forward them back to the City Clerk's office on a regular basis. This position will allow me to utilize my administrative and leadership skills that I have acquired over the years. I am confident that I will fulfill the needs of this position in a respectable manner, and will complement the City Clerk's office and represent the city of Everett. I thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Welton. Next candidate would be David Flood.
Good evening. My name is David Flood, and I reside at thirty-one Autumn Street. I wrote what I thought was a brief but comprehensive presentation of what I... of why I believe I am the most qualified candidate to fill the vacancy in the office of Assistant City Clerk. I'm very proud of that document, but it ended up being two pages long, single-spaced. I just cannot do justice to that document in the three minutes allowed to each candidate. But I would like the council members to see that document and ask for permission to distribute it at this time.
If there's no objection?
That document lays out my personal and work history, how my skill set applies to the position, and the unique experience I possess that makes me the best candidate for the job. I'll just hit the high points of those last two areas in this presentation. I'm used to working in fast-paced environments where the ability to multitask is a must. My extensive computer skills should allow me to pick up on the various computer systems used in the City Clerk's office very easily. I have experience in management of different types of staffs in various situations. As a former restaurant owner, I know that customer service is paramount. I am a fast learner, always looking to increase my knowledge base. For example, I spend a lot of time in the City Clerk's office trying to learn new things about city government. I also worked the most recent city election to begin to get a better understanding of the election process. I agree that the Assistant City Clerk position should be more involved with the City Council in order to satisfy the needs of the member in conducting the business of the council. I am certain that I can work collaboratively with each member of the council. Research is an area where I feel I would excel in general. I have already developed research tools for my own personal use that would make my life easier as an Assistant City Clerk. One major factor, I believe, sets me apart from the other candidates for this position is my knowledge of the city charter. I was the only civilian to attend every meeting of the Charter Review Commission. Because of this knowledge, I, along with Counsel Hanlon, were chosen by the City Clerk to represent the city of... city at a charter education forum in Newton where charter review is on the ballot this fall. Another major factor that I believe sets me apart from the other candidates for this position is that I already have a good working relationship with the City Clerk. We have already collaborated on projects such as aligning the city ordinances with the new city charter and developing a set of rules for the new City Council. In conclusion, I strongly believe over the last six years or more, I have demonstrated a continuous commitment to the betterment of the city and a loyalty to the City Council. If I were honored with the appointment to the office of Assistant City Clerk, I only see those commitments getting stronger. I have been asked by some why I would want this job rather than return to the more lucrative field of software development. While there are many reasons for that, one of the most important ones is I'd rather be doing something I feel passionate about. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Flood. Next candidate is, uh, Mr. Sergio Cornelio, former councilman. Sergio Cornelio? Welcome back to the council, Chairman.
Thank you very much. New seat. Good evening, councilors. I'd like to sincerely thank you for giving me and the other candidates an opportunity to speak before you tonight, and for a great interview process in the Legislative Affairs Committee. For you... for those that don't know me, my name is Sergio Cornelio, and I reside at forty-five Luke Road with my wife, Dracula. I have lived on Luke Road for nearly thirty years, and I would love to... I continue... plan to continue to live in Everett for the rest of my life. Tonight I am before you, asking for your vote to appoint me as your next Assistant City Clerk. I believe that my years in government have prepared me for this challenge and set me apart from the other candidates. I have served six years as a City Councilor, one year of that as the City Council President, which gave me the experience of running meetings and working on City Council budgets. Currently, I serve as a general manager in the food industry, managing ten employees. I have multiple locations, and I am in charge of hiring a capable and energetic staff. As a manager, I have been given the responsibility of upgrading systems to make it more efficient for employees to serve customers. One of my goals will be to work with the City Councilors and the City Clerk to make the Clerk's office more productive for residents and continue to promote a positive and stimulating work environment for all employees. My years in both management and as a City Councilor have given me the tools to succeed in the City Clerk's office. I am a very energetic person, who has worked with residents in Everett for almost ten years, and would like to continue my service in the Clerk's office. I thank you again for allowing me to speak this evening, and God bless the city of Everett. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelio.
Chairman.
Any debate from the members?
I actually have a comment.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Sure. And I just want you to know that I have been on the City Council for ten years, and this is, believe it or not, we vote on tough situations all the time. But this is one of the toughest. We have three great candidates.
We really do.
And please, whatever we do, don't take it personal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other discussion on the matter? So what we'll do is we'll have the clerk call a roll. You will name the individual of your choice, and I guess until we have a majority of the council, we'll take additional polls. So clerk will call a roll. When your name is called, please name the individual of your choice.
Counsel Delasola.
Sergio Cornelio.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Sergio Cornelio.
Counsel Hanlon. Counsel Mangan.
Sergio Cornelio.
Counsel Mackay.
Sergio Cornelio.
Counsel McKinnon.
Sergio Cornelio.
Counsel Appolitano.
David Flood.
Counsel Sacheta.
David Flood.
Counsel Sani.
Sergio Cornelio.
Counsel Simonelli. David Flood. Counsel Capone.
David Flood.
Six, we got Sergio Cornelio, four for David Flood, one for Gwen Welton.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me... let me just announce... Sergio Cornelio has six appears...
Before you make an announcement.
Oh, okay. Counsel Hanlon.
I would... I would like to make a motion that we make the vote unanimous, uh, show that there's some continuity between us all.
Second.
So I make a motion that it turn to eleven to zero.
It's been moved in second to make the vote unanimous, supporting Sergio Cornelio as the next Assistant City Clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
You have so voted. So... Mr. Cornelio, congratulations. You are our next Assistant City Clerk. Would you... would you like to say a few words? And at this point, I'll give you the option. You can either speak there or there, wherever you would prefer.
I'll come and speak to everyone. I'm going to be very brief, so... Mr. President. Mr. Clerk. I'm going to be very brief. I want to thank the candidates that, uh, there were seven of us that went to this position as of last Monday and got narrowed down to three. And we all got asked the same questions, and I know, uh, they all did a great job, and I want to thank them for being a part of this process. Uh, I've... I missed being up here at City Hall. I'll be honest with you, and this was a great opportunity. I chose not to run for, uh, anything this year to give myself a new opportunity to work in government in a different aspect. And I look forward to learning a great deal from, uh, a great man, a great City Clerk, Mike Maratzo, and Mr. Hanlon's still up here, our former City Clerk. So I intend on learning a lot. Uh, I hope that I bring enough knowledge to get the job rolling. And I thank you again for, uh, supporting me, all the ones that supported me and who didn't, for supporting their choices. They did a great job, and I appreciate it, and I can't wait to work for you. Have a great night.
Thank you. So I guess the swearing-in will be Thursday, October first. Before the clerk reads the next item of business, which is item number five, I want to recognize former Council Mike McGlaughlin in the audience. Mike, how are you? Good to see you. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number five.
Item number five, resolution sponsored by the entire Everett City Council to send the D. Domenico and Representative Begonico work to get some form of relief for compensation for Everett residents from Massport for the increased air traffic over the city of Everett.
Mr. Clerk, I think we held this over because we were waiting for communication from the senator and the rep. Do we have... do we have anything? No. I don't see anything.
There are two letters for them. I'm wondering if this has anything. I don't want to open it because it's addressed to the senator and the rep, so... I'm having trouble opening it.
Is it here?
It is there?
Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay, our clerk will read. It's, uh, he's got communication. We'll have the clerk read.
Communication.
It's, uh, just identity?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a list that shows that there are four complaints from three callers from Everett in August of two thousand and fifteen.
Do you have the date?
And then... Noise disturbance by community, a hundred and three by twenty-eight different callers.
That's the year-to-date, though. That's from January to August.
Year-to-date, thank you. Year-to-date from just... so it's January to August, a hundred and three. It looks like that's twenty-eight different callers.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council? Counsel Appolitano.
The... the original request was asking the, uh, our state legislators if they can work on getting some relief for the city. Uh, I appreciate the fact that we've got the list here and comparing it to the neighboring cities that are but, uh, Logan Airport. Uh, I'd say our call ratio is still fairly significant. I'm not sure that we've got the answer we're looking for, other than just a list of the number of calls. So, um, I'm not sure if the... if they're able to supply any other additional information, but I don't believe we've gotten our question answered. So I would, uh, ask that it be held over.
Yeah, I may not have been specific enough, Counselor. I'll rewrite that more in tune with the, uh, with the resolution. That really could be my fault.
All right. I'll accept that.
Thank you, Counsel. Your fault. Counsel Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, I just was wanting to inquire, where did the list originate from? Who gave it to us?
I think it came from... did it come from the senator's office? I'm not sure, Counsel. I'm not sure what the source of that list is.
I don't know if you had any contact with the state offices or not.
Yeah, I'm not... I'm not aware of that.
Motion is... lay it on the table.
To lay it on the table.
Second... second motion for laying it on the table.
So the motion has been made in second to lay this item on the table with a more specific request from our clerk going to our state representative, state senator, and state rep. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If so, move. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution sponsored by Counsel Salvatore Sacheta to have the gate linking Air Force Road open so that citizens can drive the car to parking lot near the Seven Acre Park. Uh, we have a response from Mr. Jay Monte, Department of Planning and Development. As discussed at the previous council meeting on September sixteenth, Department of Planning and Development has inquired with the MBTA as to whether the current access agreement can be expanded to allow vehicular access. As of our most recent communication with the MBTA this morning, nine twenty-eight, they have not yet issued an official response to the city's request. It is expected that such an official response will be issued within the next two weeks, and further update can be provided at the next meeting.
Counsel Sacheta.
Uh, due to what I read in this communication, uh, I'd like to have this referred back to, uh, well, referred to the next meeting, two weeks from now. As it states, they'll probably get an answer in two weeks. So I'd like to...
Second motion.
Lay this on the table for two weeks.
It's been... Okay, it's been moved in second to lay in the table.
On the motion.
On the motion, Counsel DeFlorio.
I'm not sure I understand, uh, what the good counselor is trying to do. Are we trying to open the gate for the cars to go inside the park? The reason why I ask that is because I got a few complaints that this kid's skating there. There's a bike path there. And these... and these cars are coming in, and it's really dangerous. So this is a park where people want to enjoy. It's a walking park. So I'm a little confused on the gate. Is it a gate just so you can park your cars? Or a gate to go inside the park? Because of the bike path and because of the kids skating, it becomes very dangerous. So I... I'm trying to understand it.
For clarification, Counsel Sacheta, could you just respond to the question from the counselor with regards to what the intent is?
Well, I want to be able to get into the park. No one can get into that park unless they got a pair of roller skates. You got to go around the city to get into the park. There's only one entrance to get in that park. It's down a small, little path, an incline. If you're any... of any age, you're not going to go to that park. That's all I'm interested in.
Okay.
If they want to put a block there so people can't use it, beyond that, that's fine with me.
Okay.
But I want to be able to get into that parking lot with a car.
Okay, so you're looking for vehicular access. Thank you, Counselor.
The reason why I want to clarify that is because I got a few complaints.
Okay.
So, and I can understand the good counselor. He wants to just be able to get to the park.
Sure.
Then once that gate, we can close it and put something there to, uh, to block it so it doesn't become dangerous.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Counsel Sani.
Just on the comment, there used to be a road, uh, we used to be able to get to Air Force Road, and we used to be able to go through that. So it's a gate that opens up not just to access for parking over there to the parking lot, to the park, but it's also a road to get over to Air Force Road to alleviate traffic. And that's what it used to be before. So I know myself was looking to open that gate so we can have access to get to Medford in a... in a less, um, distance instead of getting traffic on Main Street. So the gate does open up. It does cross the bike path that they made, but it also... it's a road that was there in the past, um, that leads to the park and also leads to a roadway.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a comment here, too. I mean, I think... I think the thing is here that we have to have these, um, these chiefs that, I mean, these, uh, Tony Souza and these people here. And this... this is why we want to ask questions.
Sure.
That's the intent, Mr.... Mr. Rosie.
Thank you, Counsel.
DeFlorio.
Thank you, Counsel.
That's the reason why.
Okay. Any other discussion? The motion before... Counsel Sacheta.
This Air Force Road is going to be open for those people that live in the Waters Avenue Development. I can't see why existing residents in the city of Everett can't use the same road. What is the big deal about using that road? I don't see any big deal of it. We're not... we're just going to cross that bike path. The road itself is meant for two lanes of traffic. What is the big deal of opening that road? I just don't understand why we're having a problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Delasola.
I agree with Counsel Sacheta, but the problem is we can't drive over the gas line that runs by the bike path. If we want to have that access road, that's fine, but I don't think we have the right to drive over the Goncong Pipeline unless we reconstruct it that when they go over it, if a truck don't come down... if a truck comes down there, goes over the line, we could have an issue. I... we all agree we want it open to relieve the traffic on Main Street, but we have to get the okay by, um, National Grid or whoever is responsible and takes maintenance of that main, that gas line that runs through the bike path.
Counsel Appolitano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there's definitely a need for higher-level information on this. I do know that, uh, you know, the Planning Board is entertaining, uh, petitions for eight lots that will all be developed down GE property, and the traffic there is supposed to be diverted by air... down through Air Force Road. So whatever the conditions are that make Air Force Road impassable for the park, for the park, doesn't seem to be an issue with routing eight lots, eight apartments worth of traffic through. So I think we do need more information on this. Uh, you know, there's, uh... Air Force Road has been there a long time, and if there's a problem with that gas line being able to sustain traffic, then, you know, we got gas lines all over the city that we drive over. Then it needs to be reconstructed in a way to make that passable. But let's get the information from the experts here, because there's more going on down there than just the park or Waters Ave. And the Planning Board, like I said, is hearing... is hearing a variance on a... on a development that's going to put a lot of traffic through there. I don't know where the gas line is in proportion to that, but I am familiar with the bike path because that bike path intersects various streets, Medford Street, all kinds of streets through the city of Malden. So people do cross the... the bike path does cross traffic. So we need... we need to talk to these people, get a little more information, find out exactly what the actual reason why we can't use it is.
Thank you, Counsel. If I may as well, we received the communication earlier today that Tony Souza is tied up at the Planning Board this evening. The motion that Counsel Sacheta had made, it's been seconded. We can get to it. If there's more discussion, we'll talk about it. But the motion is to lay it on the table to our first meeting in October, ask those individuals to come back, Jay Monte and Tony Souza, and we can get those answers then. Is there any further discussion this evening? Counsel Sacheta.
Just one more comment. Uh, Counsel Delasola brings up a gas line. That was never mentioned in last week's... last meeting by Jay Monte of the Department of Planning and Development. And also, this line, whatever they're talking about, has been crossed by large trucks for a number of years when they were filling Seven Acres Park, when they were doing a number of constructions in that area. So what is the big deal of a gas line there? So, what is the big deal of a gas line there? Why wasn't it brought up by the development, uh, authority? I, I don't understand it.
Counselor McHazy.
Uh, just, just one, one quick thing. So, Waters Ave apartments that they're building in, their access is all through Waters Ave?
Through, through the chair, please.
No, they're going.
Counselor's, Counselor's, no, cross debate, please through the chair. I know it's, it's difficult 'cause we're so close together. It's a natural tendency.
Yeah, so, was, the Waters Ave apartments have access across the pipeline, but we can't do a regular car over pipeline? Doesn't make much sense.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So, the, the best thing is we'll have the experts here next meeting. We can ask all those questions then.
Right.
But it's up to the council. Any other debate? Seeing none? The motion's been made, second to lay in the table, refer to the first meeting in October, and ask that, uh, Tony Souza and Jay Monte appear. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business. Item number seven.
Item number seven, resolution sponsored by Councilors Frank Capone, Peter De Paul Tano, Richard Delisova, the representative from Mayor's office. Representative from any other applicable department appeared at our next meeting to discuss the progress and timeframe for renovations at Florence Street Park.
We do have a, a communication from Tony Souza. There, uh, if, if the council wishes, uh, we can have it read. If, if not, the, if I may from the chair, there are a couple of issues that still remain at the park that need to be handled. So, the chair would entertain a motion to lay this on the table to our next meeting. Moved in second to lay, item number seven on the table to our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business. Item number eight.
Item number eight, resolution sponsored by Councilor Richard Delisova Jr. and Councilor Peter Reina Polatano, GPW Director Jerry Navarro, Penix meeting of City Council. Speak about plans for the new sidewalks.
Who would like to speak on this? Uh, we've got Counselor Delisova and Counselor De Paul Tano. I did receive a communication that, uh, Jerry Navarro is under the weather, so he will not be here this evening. What's the pleasure of the piece, Counselor?
Will hold us over today?
Mr. Chairman, if we hold it over, um, we, did we receive a checklist of the items that we have requested?
Mr. Clerk, do you?
So, if we hold it over, it's on our next meeting then.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Counselor Simonelli.
Again, I'm getting a little sick and tired of these, uh, people not, department has not been here. I mean, how can we discuss business here when they keep on saying they, if they're sick, they're fine. They're at another meeting, same with the mayor. They gotta be here. We, we all them here. The tax people want them here. We want them here. I'm getting sick of it. There you go.
Thank you, Counselor.
Hundred percent right.
On the piece has been moved, second to lay this piece on to, over to our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor De Florio.
Unfortunately, items number nine, ten, and eleven were asked to be laid over. We have a letter here because, uh, Ernie and Jerry are unable to attend, so.
I'll second that. Make a motion.
Is there a communication on item eleven? There is a communication on item eleven. So, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to suspend the rules, take items number nine and ten collectively, uh, and lay them over to the next meeting.
Lay them over for two weeks.
Is there a motion to that extent?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Does it take items? Items number nine and ten collectively. Is items number nine and ten collectively?
Yes.
And, uh, lay them over to the next meeting. Okay, so what we'll do is before we act on that, we'll have our clerk read items number nine and number ten.
Item number nine, resolution sponsored by Councilor Rosa de Florio and Counselor Cynthia Sani, of Water Enterprise, the mayor looking to putting second meter for gardening. And item number ten, a resolution sponsored by Counselor Sichetta. I would like to have some head of the Water Enterprise Department appear to explain the increases in the water bills that just went out, especially the sewer charges.
Okay, the motion before the body is moved in second to lay this over to, well, to our next meeting.
To our next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business. Item number eleven.
Item number eleven is a resolution sponsored by Councilors Frank Capone, Michael K. McHazy, John Lee McKinnon, Peter De Paul Tano himself, Sichetta, that the mayor personally appeared at the next city council meeting to discuss the recent trip to Italy by city officials and employees.
Mr. Clerk, I believe you're in possession of communication?
I am indeed.
If the council wishes, we can have the clerk read it. It's up to the, up to the will of the body. Would you like to hold us over? We got a motion to hold us over to the next meeting. Do, does the body want to hear the communication or no? Or do you want to just hold it over? It's, it's up to the, up to the membership. Okay. If the clerk will please read the communication.
Dear President Capone, thank you for your questions. As Melissa Rodriguez informed, I am unable to turn to tonight's meeting due to conflict events at the school, conflicting event at schools, I'm sorry. Please see below the answers to council's questions. I look forward to discussing this important endeavor further. Please identify each individual that traveled to Italy with the group. Mayor College Di Maria, Jerry Navarro, Department of Public Works Director, Sabatino Rosa, uh, Everett Police Department Community Liaison, Steve Maisy, Chief of Police, Alyssa Trezbeck, Crime Analyst, Everett Police Department Andrew De Paul Tano, Communications Department, Eric Norman, Everett High School Principal, Andrea Trangali, Director of Modern Languages, Everett High School, Tammy Turner, Teacher at Everett High School. Please explain in detail the purpose for each individual that traveled with the group. All of the members of the delegation participate in events listed in the itinerary, including presentations, meetings, et cetera.
Counselors, yes, Counselor?
Thank you. If we could, um, if the mayor's gonna come to the next meeting anyway, then I would just give a brief, uh, explanation. I guess he can come and explain this whole thing. So, I would make a recommendation for it to the next meeting.
It's up to the body. It's been moved in second to refer this next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so referred. Clerk will read the next item of business. Item number twelve.
Item number twelve, resolution sponsored by Councilor Michael K. McHazy and Councilor John Lee McKinnon to declare October third homecoming day, the Dan, Dan Ross Day.
Counselor McHazy.
I was, uh, fortunate as, uh, if a lot of people have known Dan Ross growing up, but I had a, a very personal relationship when I grew up about a hundred yards away from him. Uh, down Cherry Street Park area, played all sports with him, and later against him in college. And he was a, uh, a hell of a guy and hell of an athlete. And I, in college, when I played against him, he was a real pain in the neck because he was one of the greatest football players I ever seen in my life. There's nothing that guy couldn't catch. In playing on subpar teams, they always find a way to make it competitive because of people like Danny Ross. It was sad that Dan passed away a few years back, but, uh, what we, uh, was playing for Saturday is, uh, most rewarding, and it's time that they, uh, did honor this guy. It'll be an honor for me to be there at this time, and just want to let people know the kind of a guy he was. He was a, he was a great competitor. Grew up from humble beginnings, never forgot where he was from, and I can never forget that, uh, Heskey used to be in his variety. Heskey used to say, toss it to Ross, uh, you know, that was like graffiti twenty years ago 'cause it stayed on there for ten years. But, uh, I just hope everybody comes down and, uh, listens to it and finds out what kind of guy Dan Ross really was.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKinnon.
Uh, great man, great family, uh, came from a great area, um, and he followed his dream and he, he lived the, the ultimate dream. Uh, played in the NFL, uh, broke records, all that stuff. So, uh, I think this is, uh, more than, uh, uh, more than enough. A, a good tribute to Dan Ross and the family, so, um, I think it's a great thing. As Mike said, uh, Mike, did you put that on, uh, Anthony Grecci's, uh, thing, toss it to Ross?
I would have spelled it wrong.
Don't incriminate yourself. We got a couple of years, but don't incriminate yourself.
No cross debate. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to briefly mention, um, a couple of weeks ago, I ran into the former Alderman, uh, John Magucci, and he explained to me he had this shirt on, and, um, it mentioned like the classes, but it was also a Dan Ross on there. And, uh, he told me that, um, people can go buy noeys, uh, reversal screening on, um, Ferry Street, and they're selling the shirts, I believe, that for Dan Ross, uh, for fifteen dollars. So, if anybody wants to go buy there for homecoming day.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? There's been a motion, favorable action. Do we have a second? It's been moved, second favorable action. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed the resolution. Clerk will read the next item of business. Item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, resolution sponsored by Councilor Michael K. McHazy that the month of October be declared Italian Heritage Month.
Counselor McHazy.
Uh, yes, as we know, in October, we have, uh, mostly a lot of Italian celebrations. Christopher Columbus, roses, uh, soft tomatoes that they, uh, makes the sauce out of, uh, the old, uh, grapes that the husband attempts to make wine out of. But I know we're not all Italian, but for this month, everybody's Italian. So, uh, it'd be a great, a great month as all.
I second that.
Moved in second on the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have passed the resolution. Clerk will read the next item of business. Item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen, resolution sponsored by Councilor Frank Capone, the city reviews snow plowing procedures and policy as to enforcement of the snow removal ordinance in preparation of the winter season.
Chair would entertain a motion to refer to Committee on Government Operations, Public Service, request, uh, represented from the mayor's office, uh, represented from city services, and someone from ISD. Someone could make that into a motion. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read the next item. Item number fifteen.
The motion to adjourn is always in order.
There was no second, so.
Oh, okay. It is always in order. Item number fifteen, resolution sponsored by Councilor Michael J. Mangan, that the city considers waiving the excise tax for all military personnel.
Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I saw this back a few months ago, actually, um, when, um, actually, former Councilor McGoffin was in the hospital. I remember I saw on, on Fox News one day, Tom, former Councilor in Everett and current Methuen Town Council, Tommy Shula, uh, put a, a piece together with the state rep, I believe it was Diane De Zarglio up in, uh, Methuen about waiving the, um, excise tax for all military personnel. And then just recently, um, uh, Council, um, what do you call it? My good friend Anthony De Perro, um, had brought it to my attention that, um, well, like I said, that, uh, he thought this is something that will also would be very, very good here in the city. So, this is something I definitely think it should be supported, especially for people that are not here, that have served in our country, um, over in the, over in the Middle East and so forth. They're not here to, you know, be able to do that. They're not using our street, so I would like to make a motion that we, uh, send this to the mayor's, um, office also to him. And they, in, in all fairness also to, uh, I was in the back before the meeting started, and Counselor, um, uh, McHazy did say to me that he did reach out to, um, at one point a few months ago, to, uh, Counselor Shula also on this piece. So, um, I don't know what happened between them, but this was just, again, brought to me from, um, Anthony De Perro, um, and he had talked to, uh, Counselor Shula himself. But, but I just want to mention this, and, um, I'd like to, um, uh, favorable recommendation to send this to the, uh, the mayor's office.
Okay, it's moved in second. Before we vote on the motion, Counselor McHazy.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, as, uh, Mr. Mangan, uh, Counselor Mangan has emphasized, this piece was, uh, filed up about two months ago. And as I favor the Counselor Shula, I sat back from introducing this, 'cause I believe he had the process introducing to the state. And this is a, a nice piece, a simple piece. It'll be, uh, I don't think it had to be brought to anybody's attention. This is, was written in the paper. So, if you read the paper, you've learned that something like this was there. And, um, I think it's a great piece. In fact, um, I wish I brought it up quicker, but I was just trying to be respectful to the council for Methuen and the process they had there to introduce it to the state. But I'm all favor for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor De Paul Tano.
Thank you. Um, I'm, 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 first of all, I think it's a great idea. I mean, but I, I, I'm curious. I'm a little confused because I was under the impression that that was already the case. And the reason I say that is, I spent eight years on active duty in the United States Navy. My last four years, I was stationed at Naval Air Station South Weymouth, living in Everett, commuting every day. Uh, I remember the four years that I, my last four years on active duty when I, I, my excise tax was waived on my vehicles. So, I'm just, I've got a question for the city solicitor, 'cause I want to, just curious if something maybe has changed in the last thirty years. Been out of the service for a while, but, uh, but I remember in, in eighty-two to eighty-six, when I came in to pay my excise tax, I showed my military ID. It was waived. So, I'm a little confused by this.
Okay. Would you like to have the city solicitor?
Could I, could we have the city solicitor come up, please?
If we could please have the city solicitor before us. Colleen, welcome. If you could just identify yourself, and, and this is kinda coming at you from a field. I don't know if you're prepared to answer this this evening, but let's just, uh, introduce yourself and we'll take it from there.
Sure, Colleen Mejia, city solicitor. Um, I, I don't have any information, but I'm glad to get some if you'd like to refer to my office.
If you could, because, you know.
Absolutely.
I, I don't, I mean, I don't want to see any duplication.
Sure.
Where existing, where laws already exist.
Mm-hmm.
And if there isn't, then we should do something like that. I fully, fully support that. But I just want to make sure that if we're not, if we're already doing it, let's not waste time.
Right.
And let's, let's, let's make sure people are aware of that. So, if you could.
Absolutely.
I would actually like to motion, then, well, I'll hold my motion. Okay. But that's the only question I have, is that I think we need more information.
Okay.
To find out what we already do and make sure that we're able to enhance it if we're not doing it.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions for our city solicitor? Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleen, if you could, um, get in touch with, I mean, it might be helpful, um, with, uh, State Representative Diane De Zarglio from Methuen. Um, again, I don't have her information, but, um, I believe she was gonna sponsor something, so I don't know why she, she would if there was something aggravating on the books. I mean, Counselor De Paul Tano may be right, but, um, I mean, she may be somebody that, um, you might be able, you know, to reach out to.
Sure.
To find some information. Thank you.
No problem.
Counselor McKinnon, did you have a question?
I, I would just think that if maybe we could, uh, send maybe a letter off to our representative and our, uh, state senator, just to make sure that.
Okay, no, no question for, uh, uh, city solicitor?
I would just ask if, uh, she did know, if there was any type of state legislation that's out there now, and if, if not, then maybe we could do something to that effect, ask one of the.
I, I think Counselor Mangan said that the, um, representative who represents Methuen is sponsoring some piece, so, so there probably is something, um, in the works.
I, I don't know if there's something currently, you know, on the books now, but is this more to enhance what they're doing or, I mean, that's what I'm trying to.
If you'd, I'd look, gladly look into it if you want to refer to, to me.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for our solicitor? Seeing none, thank you, Madam Solicitor.
And then just as a request, I would like to send it to our representative and our senators who would actually follow up on that, to see if they can come back with something on that as well.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor De Florio.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, working for the registry, I know that once a year, we have something for the military. They get like free plates, free renewals. So, there might be something on the books for this, and if there isn't, then def- it definitely should be done. So, the state does do something in regards to the registrations and license renewal, and, um, so, you know, like I said, I, hopefully, there is something on the books, and if it's not, I definitely agree to this a hundred percent. Thank you.
Counselor De Paul Tano.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, again, I fully support anything that is enhancing military service. Most people don't have any idea just what type of sacrifice is involved when you're owned by Uncle Sam, you know, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. I think before we send anything to any other offices, let's, let's send this to the city solicitor's office. Let's get some research. Let's find out first of all what is on the books, and then from there, discuss how we're gonna enhance this and how we want to, we want to support it. But let's determine first what is there and then go from there. So, I would motion that this go to the city solicitor's office first for response in two weeks.
Yep. So, we've got several. So, do we have a second on that one for the city solicitor's office? Okay. Counselor McKinnon. Counselor McKinnon.
Yeah, I would, I would just ask that if there is something that's on the books, uh, it, it may need to be adopted by us here and then the mayor. So, if we could do that, um, and then if we need to strengthen it further, then we can go on and strengthen it. Uh, I agree with my colleague on that one as well, so.
Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Someone motioned, as well, send it to the mayor's office as well as the, um, the solicitor's office. Because out of respect, it should go to the mayor's office, quite certainly, for, for, uh, research from, uh, from the solicitor's office.
So, you have a hybrid motion. They're gonna send it to the mayor's office and the solicitor's office. Is there a second on that? It's been moved in second to refer this to the mayor's office.
On the motion?
Counselor De Paul Tano.
On the motion. Again, I don't have a problem with sending it to the mayor's office, but we haven't, we don't even have the details. Let's get the details first. What is it we're requesting the mayor to do? I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to request him to do something that we are already possibly able to do. Let's get, wait two weeks, get the response. It's not gonna change anything. It's not gonna affect anything. It's not gonna hurt anybody. Let's find out what's on the books first and then decide what to do with it. But otherwise, you know, um, again, I, I just, I just don't want us duplicating effort that may already exist. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly respect Counselor De Paul Tano's motion, but again, um, just so the, I think out of respect to the mayor's office, they know, uh, that it could be something coming down the line, and I just think they've given them a fair warning about it. I think it's just courtesy, and I just think that's still the proper motion to refer to both the mayor and the city solicitor.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. We have two motions before us. We have a motion to refer it to the city solicitor's office, and we have a second motion to refer it to the city solicitor's office and the mayor's office. So, I'm gonna, because we have differences here, I'm gonna take the first one to refer it to the city solicitor's office. And there was something, there was a motion to refer it to the state rep and, uh, state senator.